Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee. We're here to hear EA 24-0236 for the Director of Department of Public Works. Now that we have everybody from DPW here, I should have brought a list of things I need done, but we will, I'll turn the floor over to you. Want to introduce yourself and tell us, we'll see you at, then the committee will ask some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Schleifer, Honorable Committee and Councilmembers, I want to thank you today for this opportunity to be reconsidered for the position of the Director of the Department of Public Works for the City of Baltimore. To start by thanking the Mayor for his trust in serving the city that I love in this important role. As a former refugee and immigrant to this, lived thirty-five, nine years in this beautiful city of ours. I have met my wife here and my children attended Baltimore City Public School. I'm glad to be back home. I would also like to thank this, to take this opportunity to thank my deputy, Richard Luna, he's in the back there, for serving in that role for the past year or so. He did it with pride and perseverance that this job requires. In addition, I would like also to thank the great DPW staff here behind me today that is committed and work hard every day. Honorable members, I believe my extensive knowledge of Baltimore City Government, experience in other cities around the country, and my years of in the private sector have provided me well for this role. Starting from an engineer one position within Public Works and rising through have given me a unique opportunity to understand the complexities of this organization, but more importantly, develop the human relationship needed to be successful leader in multiple functions. My experience in Channel Paso, both governments, taught me the do's and don'ts of running a department. And finally, in my leadership role as Vice President of Special Projects for KCI Technologies, one of the largest 50 firms in the country, I have learned some of the efficiencies and how the private sector operates. Now I'd like to take few minutes to briefly highlight the priorities we have for the next year or so. First, improve the working conditions for our employees. We can't expect people to work hard without providing the adequate environment for them to do their job successfully. Second, set the required metrics for accountability. Customer service is the core of our business. Implementing city stat and project stat internally are essential tools to measure data and productivity Create an environmental sustainable approach for Public Works. We do that through zero waste vision and partnership with nonprofit local and national environmental organizations. Maintain our emphasis on compliance in both bureaus. We have to establish cooperative approach that will gain the trust of EBA and MDE and develop longer and more productive relationship with both organizations. Stabilize our water and wastewater funding source. Our old depleted infrastructure is a clear sign of the needed improvement. Affordability. Water for All and Promise Pay are good tools to help citizens. However, as the cost of doing business increases, we'll saw the need to provide relief. We need to maintain our weekly recycling services. We need to improve our street sweeping operation both contractually and through modernizing our fleet. And finally, but most importantly, our workforce development. I had a unique benefit of seeing the city workforce eight years after I left. While we have developed a great and upcoming talent, we have also lost a great deal of institutional knowledge. We need and we will invest in our employees at all levels to be in a better place than we were ten years ago. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my opening remarks. Thank you for giving me the time to outline this approach. I would be happy to answer any questions you or the committee may have.
Thank you very much. Start on the far right, Councilman Bullock.
Good afternoon and thank you. One of the things I know that you've shared in some of our conversations has been how you also plan to share this sort of information with communities. Can you talk about the attempt for DPW to be more forward-facing organization, especially given some of the things you just mentioned?
The first thing that comes to mind, it is when we look at, we, as an organization, we deal with the two most, in my belief, two of the most important things that any city, any local government deals with. We provide water and we take trash and recycling. So, two most important functions. And with that, it is critical, critical that our involvement with the communities to be face-to-face. And I say that in front of the council today, and I offer it to some of the staff members that I met with already, that I would love to meet with you in your community meetings, in your community walks, come in and talk to the communities about some of the issues that we might have, that the community can help us with, and at the same time, see and learn from the community's issues, that are, things that we could improve as an organization.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just a follow-up as well. So again, definitely appreciate that. One of the things you mentioned was the water and wastewater funding, and I know that's significant, especially given some of the infrastructure challenges we deal with in the city. And I know a lot of us, self-included, get questions around water pressure issues, around water mains. Can you talk about how you envision the resources following some of the input that you're getting from communities, and also how you share, kind of meet their expectations, so we're all on the same page?
So, one of the issues that we deal with in our infrastructure here in Baltimore City, that is, I've read in one of the studies that we had, is that we lose twenty-six percent of our good water before it reaches to the customer. So you're talking about one-fourth of our water is lost before. That is due to water breaks that we have throughout the city, that is due to the age of our infrastructure. So, it is so critical that as we invest, put back, invest in that infrastructure, make it better, fix it in order to move forward, in order to get it to a place where we need to be, and to provide the benefit that we need to the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Councilor President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, first of all, I'd like to say, welcome back. I know that you have, you're very familiar with Baltimore, and we have worked together on many occasions, and from DPW and with DOT. So, I think you're a very capable leader that can pick up and just really help to move DPW forward. But I do have some questions. And the first one, I guess, just to kind of piggyback with my colleague, Councilwoman Bullock, that had mentioned about water, I just want to take that to another level. You had mentioned your awareness of Water for All, and how we're working with that. I was kind of the lead on the Water for All, the act and the bill to help with a number of erroneous water bills around the city, and it still continues to be a problem. Is there anything added, or how are you going to continue those efforts in really trying to help with our water billing problems?
Coming from the outside and looking as a perception versus the reality, and we have issues. We have issues, I understand, in our billing. But those issues with the work that the Toya Sky Sykes and Latoya, Chief of Staff here, have done in the past, it really, it really reduced that tremendously. And if we're looking at it, you'll see some issues, you'll see some issues with the problem. But feel free to bring it to our attention, because we take a look at each one of them, and we investigate each incident that we have, and trying to get to the bottom of it. Now, going back to statistics, going back to metrics, going back to numbers, we're looking, if there is a trend there somehow, some way. If there is a way to kind of relate, do we have a problem specifically in specific locations, or some of those problems are just out, someone missed, human error? And by doing that, by you identifying and others identifying those issues to us, we look into the details of that and trying to find out whether we have a problem with that. But what I think, between now and coming, maybe five to six years ago, when I was in a different position in this city, that the place has improved tremendously from that perspective.
I agree, I agree. And I do want to applaud DPW for, you know, they have a very outstanding community engagement leadership team and liaisons, and the customer service focused in that realm is just very efficient, very efficient. I see the presence of DPW everywhere. I know within my district, when we have certain symposiums or things that the community, the involvement or activities that they're doing within the community, there seems to always be a presence with DPW. And I guess I want to know how you can, how are you going to replicate that in the other parts of your agency? Because I do see that in your top-level area.
Yep. So, one thing, thank you for this question, but one thing that comes to mind is our capital projects, where we think we need to do better at. So, and we see that. We see that with, with, from complaints from the community about communication, about dealing with a lot of the issue that comes in. And a lot of times, and Councilwoman Ramos says, we dealt with that, is what people need to know is, is the truth. What people need to know, it is what happens and what is the expectations are. And we need to do better at that. And I think from the capital project perspective, we need to be better, do better at it, letting people know what the expectations are, and when we need to be able to start a project and fix it. Now, sometimes to their defense, is that all these answers are not there at the time. You have, you made certain assumptions before start a project, and those assumptions are no longer valid, because you have a change order in the contract, you have a change in condition. So, those things will change the scheduling, they change a lot of those issues, but at some point, I think the ability to communicate and communicate better is something that we need to work on.
Okay. Thank you. And last, just lastly, I know in your executive team, you have a Deputy Director, a Chief of Staff, and an Administrator, and some people look at that as very, as kind of top-heavy. Can you explain why you need all those, are you going to continue to have all those three positions?
We're working on the organization structure right now. We're reevaluating their structure.
Okay.
And as we, as it becomes finalized, we'll share that with the council.
Okay. And I know we're approaching, we are going back to our budget session, so I guess that would be the conversation then.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. So, I'll get straight to the juice of it. We've had our conversations about accountability in middle-management within the agency. My questions are very clear, related to the water side of the house. There is a lack of customer service in the Office of Engineering, Engineering Construction. There is a lack of execution, communication that needs to be addressed. What will be your plan to address that, as someone who is coming from an external agency, back into the agency?
Yeah. And I'm straight sure, so I'm going to be straight to the, to the answer with that. We need help. And we have some really capable people. I have one of the most capable people behind me there, it's Tim Wolf, who is an engineer that I worked with in the past. And Tim is an exceptional engineer. I worked with Tim for over twenty, twenty-five years, and I know Tim. Tim is one of the best engineers in the city or the state of Maryland in water and wastewater, and we're lucky to have. The issue is, Tim needs some assistance. Tim needs help, and we're working to provide Tim with the needed help in order to spread the work, in order to get him more assistance, in order to get more people capable of helping right away in the process. One of the things that I mentioned in my remarks is, I mentioned about the difference ten years ago from now, and I was able to see both sides, prior and now, and I see the difference in the institutional knowledge that we lost during those years. We lost incredible amount of people that understand the system and understand it really well. But that happens in a lot of organizations. We need to work on it, and we need to retool and get people back in, and get the people that we have some additional help.
Happy to hear that, but I want to lean in a little bit further.
Sure.
The countless times I've had to have DOT shut down a work site of a private contractor because of the lack of execution and oversight, I want to know, what is a commitment that you can make as an agency here about ensuring that inspectors are where they're supposed to be, reports are done timely, as well as the reception, the receptiveness of informing the public about changes as well?
I'll go to, let me answer the second one part. I brought up some, when you brought up the issue, when, the issue about communicating, and Councilwoman Middleton brought up the issue, how good we are in certain areas, but not so good in others. This is one of the areas that I mentioned that we're not good at, is the communicating piece in the engineering side, and we need to do better at it. We understand that we do, we understand that we need to do better and communicate with our customers, communicate with everybody, and communicate well and communicate truthfully. I think our people sometimes are scared of giving the bad news, because they think the bad news is going to be just, everybody's going to be pissed. We need to be able to tell the truth, to tell, tell what it is, what it's going to take to get this project done. Going back to, to your first issue, I come from transportation, so I led the Department of Transportation. Street cuts and street cuts requirements, I happened to be one of the first one to write it down in the early 2000, 2001, 2002. Being on the other end, seeing it from the other side, so I understand it, and I know how DOT deals with it right now, and being on the other side and feeling. Do we need to do a better job at it? Absolutely. Do our people do a good job at maintaining the sites? No, they don't, and we need to do better at it. I understand, you have my commitment that I'll, will do better. We'll get the right people in, we'll get the right supervisors, and we'll get the people that need help, we'll get them the help that they needed, but we'll get where we need to be.
If the Chair will permit me one follow-up question? Next is the contractors. How do we ensure that contractors are compliant? I know the administration's going through procurement reform. Are you yourself fine with us putting in requirements for future RFPs and solicitations about past performance, so that if you did a bad job in Baltimore City, you no longer can be employed by Baltimore City to do that job again? I just want to make sure that while we have our staff side of it, I think we need to make sure that we're sending a message to external vendors, that doing a bad job does not mean you get to come back.
Agree with you hundred percent, and I think those evaluations are good, and those evaluations are needed. However, I go back to the same issue that we had before. It is first, our responsibility as an agency, and as inspectors, and as engineers, to manage that contractor, right? If you have a bad contractor at the end, then yes, we need to deal with it, but we need to do our job first before expect the contractor to do his job right. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, we had a, I enjoyed our meeting, and we covered a lot of bases there, but some of one of my colleagues mentioned, talking about budget, just thought of something small, so I figured I'd run it by you. Every year in the budget process, I think for probably the past six years or so, I brought up the request of stopping the, the production and sending out of the calendar. We, most people now have a calendar on their cellphone, and the calendar has always got different issues and quite costly, and when people see, you know, cost rising, their water bills, all utilities have gone up, I just think it's a bad look for us to spend, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on unnecessary things. So I wanted to see if that's something that you've looked at already, or something you'd be considering, just stopping, putting out a calendar.
So, it's, I haven't had that discussion with the staff, but I could tell you that we had it before, obviously, before I left, they had it. And a certain members of the community that we have depend on that in the past. And as our population changes, and those, you know, younger populations become older and older, we might be able to get to that point where we eliminate it completely. For now, I need to have a discussion with the staff that has been here longer, and thinking where we stand with this issue, and then we can decide from there.
Sure. And maybe, maybe there's a hybrid model where we print some and make it available at some places, like senior centers and others, but I can tell you, my eighty-seven-year-old grandfather uses his phone for a, for a calendar. He doesn't look at the DPW calendar, so just something, something to take a look, look at, and can be quite the cost savings that can be rolled into other things.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't anticipate it to go back to the same that it used to be ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, just mailing it to every household is just not necessary.
Agreed.
Yeah. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you, Khalil. You know, fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with you when I first joined the Mayor's office, and then you were the Director of the Department of Transportation. I actually cut my teeth working alongside you at DOT, and I remember then, the agency was one of the best agencies that I had worked with, and I appreciated your work then, I appreciated your directness, I think, with the team, and your sense of vision back then, and I'm looking forward to you emulating that effort again, now as the Director of DPW. That said, DPW has a number of very different challenges.
Sure.
And I want to ask you about two, and two, because we have two bureaus, so I'll leave it to that. So first, I want to start on the water side of things. As you are fully aware, there's been a robust discussion about where water should lie, who should have control of the water system, and what that might look like. And I'm curious for you, you know, I think it's really, really important for the city to maintain some significant control of our water assets, given the investment that we made, and continue to make, but also for our own sort of self-sufficiency. I'm curious how you're looking at that conundrum, it's a big one, probably, I don't know if any changes may or may not happen in your tenure, but curious how you're thinking about that issue, coming in as the new Director.
So, we had that conversation with, earlier today with Councilman Schleifer, and I, and I said, we lost, as a city, we lost the port at one point. We lost the airport, right? And now, we have the school system, we lost the school system, which is, might be a good thing, but that's debatable. And now we have the water. That's the last thing that we have left, and I think having to give that up without a fight, without the right price, it's, it's, it has to be the right equation, the right model, if we do. If you ask me right now, would you, if you have to decide, would you do it or not, I would say no. I wouldn't give it up. No.
I look forward to continuing to work with you on that issue. I know, I don't know if it's this committee or another committee, we got too many committees, have addressed this issue in a number of times. Public safety, yeah, and government operations, we talked a lot about that, and it's a very, very important issue, I think, especially to the future of our city, and so, you know, I think we'll, we'll all be really paying attention to that. The other question is one that is also very important to the future of the city, and that is our efforts around zero waste. We had taxpayers' night now, two weeks ago, and I could tell you, probably fifty percent of people, I could probably tally it up, because I wrote down all the notes, probably fifty percent of people were talking about zero waste, particularly from the air quality perspective, and the incinerator, and our over-reliance on the incinerator, but then also just generally waste, and how much it costs us to deal with waste. So I'm curious how you and your team are thinking about addressing that challenge, especially in light of our current tenure agreement with Bresco, or whatever you'd like to call it, the incinerator. How are you thinking about that issue?
It's, and I think when we had the conversation then, I said, just the name solid waste seem outdated, right? I mean, we're a progressive city, and we want to be more progressive. We're going to be really moving into environmental services type of work. So we're looking at that model in general, how we could do that as a model, stormwater management might be part of that, we haven't decided yet, but we're looking at it. And I think, and I could say that without mentioning, going more details, but we're hiring someone that is going to start looking at that, and looking what that model will looks like. So within the next probably few months, you'll, you probably will see something.
Yeah, and I'll ask to, as we think about that model, and of course you guys will do this, we've talked about this in other capacities, but to always keep in mind, I think the questions that my two colleagues, Vice President Milton and Councilman Torrance, I think, talked about with that sort of communication, and setting proper expectations for folks across the city about how they interact with the department, and what to expect, whether it be on recycling day, or for some other pickup day. We have to educate people and get them used to whatever changes we might expect to roll out, so I will continue to work with you on that, look forward to working with you in your new capacity. I think you'll do a phenomenal job, I'm really excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Director, thanks for your conversations with me about the communications piece. I think setting, as my colleagues have said, expectations is really important. The case for my colleagues at a vacation that we're talking about is expectations around the sinkhole, and when that will be repaired, it is a very dangerous situation, and we want to get it right, and don't, and the workers deserve to go home at night to their families. And so, as long as we're setting those expectations, my constituents have understood, not happy, but they understood, and that's okay. So, we have to, we have to do that. So, I'm looking forward to continuing those conversations, not just about this, but all of the other things that are coming up. You know, my colleagues have asked a couple of my questions, which kind of tells you, I think, where we are as a council relative to DPW. I wanted to ask two different questions. One is about procurement, procurement. And the city administrator told us the other day that there will be two charter amendments coming before us that would remove the contents of the procurement regulations, and everything to do with procurement out of the charter and into ordinance and regulation. And I just wanted to make sure that you've been a part of those conversations, considering that procurement is such a big deal for, for your department. I, I don't want to hear anybody saying, again, I've been waiting for a year on procurement for this, that, the other, and so, I don't think anybody else wants to either. So I just wanted to make sure that you've been a part of those conversations relative to what's going to, I mean, we'll see it, but I do want to make sure that you've been a part of that, and know what you're expecting around those things.
So, and honest, the past couple of weeks, I haven't seen it, but I'm sure that the city administrator will get, the agency that needed to be part of it, will get us involved in it, because we, DOT, and to some degree, DGS and Rexon Parks are the driving force behind any design and construction piece. Obviously- Obviously, there is two parts for procurement. You have the construction procurement and then you have services and materials, equipment procurement. And those two go into two separate ways, the way they do it. Our procurement, at least in the design piece, is based on performance base, obviously. So deciding on who will design a specific project is based on quality. People qualify based on, not on value, not on dollar value, but it's based on performance, based on what, their ability to do the work. As for the construction, obviously, we have multiple methods of ways to do it. I think what the administration is looking is to, is to have, city agency have more liberal ways to do or more varieties of doing it, whether it's design bill or design bid build, depending on the need and depending on what kind of project that is you have ahead of you. So I'm sure a lot of, we have a lot of time to look and to think on these new regulations, on the requirements, and how it's going to affect today, day-to-day operations for us as an agency.
Thank you for that. The other piece is around hiring staff who speak Spanish or Latinos. I know you just hired Elizan, and I'm really grateful for that. What are your strategies moving forward? Because we obviously have, you know, we're trying to hire a lot of people at all various levels. And we want to make sure that not only are we hiring Latinos and Spanish speakers, but that once they come, they are, you know, there are translators and there are others available to be able to help with, with that. So I want to make sure that we're, there's a strategy around that. Plus the, the public meetings, I think DPW's been doing great on figuring out the public meetings for having language access. So I really appreciate that as well.
I can't say more than, as an immigrant myself, you know, and as a person who couldn't speak the language coming in at all and have to learn the language and the difficulties dealing with that as you come in. Luckily, I was eighteen or nineteen years old, so I was able to learn it and, and be better at it. But I can understand those difficulties. I visit Chicago often where we have a lot of our community, Palestinian community are in, in the Chicago area. And I could see that also, it is, the same issue is there where I have my in-laws been there for thirty years and can't communicate, really. They need someone that can communicate with them. So I think going back to this issue, this is a so, issue so critical for us to be able to communicate with all the people, all the citizens of this city. And this invitation, although I can't speak Spanish, I was in El Paso, but I can't speak Spanish. I, I would love the opportunity to, to speak to some of those communities and to come someday and to kind of explain what we do and maybe have an interpreter there to do that for us. But I would love that opportunity to show them that they're included in the big picture that we have.
I'll be happy to, to start those conversations. Thank you.
Please, absolutely.
And I just want to say a special shout-out to so many people at DPW that I know our office works with to solve the myriad of issues that we've come up with, whether it's water pressure or, you know, billing or, you know, the, the big project we just talked about this morning with some folks around Thirty-Fifth and Hillen. I just really appreciate dedication of our DPW staff and workers and communication with our office in resolving a lot of those issues and making them a huge priority. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your return to the city. The, the questions I had, we talked a little bit about this previously, but, you know, I do want to sort of reiterate the importance of moving the city towards zero waste. And currently, I mean, obviously, you know, we're in the budget process right now. But I guess what is your plan for the next few years to both increase funding for alternatives to incineration, to build out the agency's capacity to do that? Currently, there's, it doesn't seem to be a very aggressive push in this, this current budget. But moving forward, we obviously have opportunities to, to move the agency in that direction, particularly as we see that climate change is, is coming very quickly. And we, as a city, do need to pivot aggressively away from incineration. So I do want to second my colleague here, and also lift up your work in this direction, but I guess he's the director of the agency. How do you plan to help us pivot a little bit quicker than we have been, knowing that time is of the essence here, not only here in Baltimore City, but across the country?
Yeah. I, I just want to go back to the, to the issue that I brought up earlier, and that is, we're in the process of creating something. And without getting to the much details of it, because it's not completely done, but is, the, the thinking behind it, it is, as our population in this city changes and, and we have more and more people that are willing to do that, I think we have a greater opportunity at this point to move in and to do something really important and, and, and change course to some degree. But it needs to make sure that it went through processes. I've been in some processes that haven't been vetted and good, good things would have came out of it, but it wasn't vetted really well and, and died early. I don't want this to die. So we want to make sure that is, before it came out, before it's done, it's done correctly and it's shared with everyone. And it will be shared with you first before it should be shared with anybody else out in the outside.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair. Second question I had, one of the challenges that we've obviously seen in this agency is, you know, maintaining our, our staff, particularly our solid waste workers. And one of the things that we've heard time and time again is competitive pay. Making sure that folks can support their families and feel that there's also a pathway within the agency to continue to climb. Can you speak to your plans to try and ensure that our folks that do the recycling pickup and trash pickup are being able to, to make a, a family-supporting wage here in Baltimore City?
I think you're right. I, I think we don't pay people, you know, I, I think the pay has improved and we've done a better job at it. But I think there is a lot of other things that we could do also to show appreciation to our people. And we do some of it already. I had the opportunity to, to visit the hospital when one of our employees got shot. I mean, he was doing his job, you know, and, 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 and to see, to see that and to see what they go through every time, it, it's, it's hard. What we can promise is that we always going to be looking to evaluate what we pay compared to the surrounding areas and try to be as competitive as we possibly can in order to provide, provide more competitive environment. It's, it's a lot of other issues that are involved in people coming and working for us. But I think that issue, we could be doing a better job at. And I think we can.
Thank you. And DPW Hall of Famer, Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, what are we doing about equity, both internally and externally, when it comes to the Department of DPW? And I know internally, you guys are having trainings and things of that nature, but what about externally? Can you explain to us what you guys are doing?
I mean, one of the things that is, you said externally, so it's, it's, we want to look at some of the practices that we do and some of the activities that we do outside with other. We want to make sure that those activities are, from equity perspective, are done throughout the city. One of the issues I think that came to mind, and it makes sense, and sometimes we don't see it, is Councilman Schleifer mentioned the issue about our truck day. Not today, but to, to Marchia at some point. And truck day being, coming in on a Saturday all the times and there is a group in our community that can't do that on a Saturday. There is an equity in that. We need to develop that. There is an equity needs to be in the way we do business in terms of services. Are we fair? Are we treating West Baltimore the way we treat Roland Park? In terms of trash pickups, in terms of responses to water main breaks, in terms of anything that we do. And I'll tell you, one thing is going to show that is metrics. We're going to use metrics to figure out any trends that we have to see how we're performing. And if we see certain things done in a, in a manner that is not equitable throughout the city, then we think we're going to have an issue that to deal with regarding to that. We have Marco here who leads our group and he's part of the senior staff. Marco's in, I think Marco's in the back here somewhere. And, and he's part of our ELT team. It's a team of five or six of us. We meet every weekend, every week on a Tuesday. And every time we forget, Marco reminds us with it. What are we missing? Where do we need to be and what do we need to do moving forward?
Another question is, I just want to kind of piggyback off Councilman Burnett. He was mentioning about the wages with DPW, particular, you know, me, I'm really big on solid wage. That's where I come from. You know, I think everybody wants to feed their family. We all want to take our family to the Bahamas. You know, they're, they're no different than us. They sit on the city council. They're city employees. And, you know, I heard you earlier mention that there's other things that you do to, I guess, support and congratulate those that are doing great jobs within the department. But I'm talking about wages. You know, we can, we can, we can give a gift card or things of that nature because of outstanding work that they're doing, but that doesn't put food on their table, that doesn't pay their bills. We, we got to come up with a plan. We, we need to do it. This administration, to the point, we got to pay, we got to pay our workers. You know, we, we look at this around the counties, they're outpaying our workers. And I believe that is how we lose a lot of our CDL drivers, who many of us, I know, like even myself, I was trained within, you know, DPW to get my CDLs. But I know many of them that have gotten their CDLs and have gone elsewhere because of, you know, the wage gap. So what are your plans on really working hard to ensure that those workers are getting the wages that they deserve?
So DHR is doing a salary study. And they're going to come, come back to us with what the, the salary study is and what we pay each, you know, group in our employees, especially affected by ASME employees in this case. I don't think we're going to stop it. I think we're going to be looking at the surrounding jurisdictions and look what, what the salary dictates and whether it fits within our model. So if the salary study that comes in say that we're paying our people enough at this point, and we know that the reality it isn't, then we will have to do some additional work ourselves to go back, back to DHR and revisit those salaries and the salary requirement that is needed. I agree with you. Our people need to get paid, need to get paid a little bit, not a little bit, but a lot more than what they do right now. But we'll wait to see with the salary study, looking at the entire region and what they come up with, and then we can have another conversation.
Okay, just one last suggestion. I mean, I know you say you're going to look at the entire region, but sometimes we have to be the pilot, we have to take the stance. Again, is this really, really personal to me? So that's why I'm making it hopefully personal to you, that we make sure that these workers, and not only it's a solid waste, we have transportation, no DPW, you know, employees, period, are getting the wages that they deserve. They deserve them. They work hard. Solid waste, they pick up the things that none of us want to touch. So I just want to make sure that we're making sure our men and women are getting the wages that they deserve. And please, please take that into heart.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Bullock, you have anything? Councilor President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess just to piggyback on my colleague, I, I didn't know if anyone mentioned the apprenticeship program for water and wastewater. Is that still going strong?
Right, yes.
Okay. And so I guess to also kind of add to what my colleague had mentioned, there's programs throughout the city with different organizations that have just started to kind of pre-apprenticeship to really kind of help prepare them to apply for city jobs. And DPW is one of the, I feel it's like the, the most important agency in, in, in the city. You're just so well-versed with so many different things. And you do have a wonderful person helping you with that. You had mentioned Marco, and we go way back from Department of Labor license and regulations many years ago. So you do have a very good person to, to help and work with you. Park Heights Renaissance is one nonprofit that, well, 501(c)(3) that has a, now a clean and green team that they have been having for like six, seven years. And they've taken it a step further and now will have a building to help train and so on. And I think they have also been helping DPW and housing with things like cutting grass and so on because of the big areas like the seventeen acres. And the individuals that are in that particular group are just very dedicated and are learning very well. And those are organizations that you can tap into to take positions, you know, further. And they can really develop them into a career. So I'm just using them as an example. I know there's other organizations around the city as well. I don't know if you have started to look at those partnerships.
One of the main area of need is our facilities, water and wastewater facilities. I mean, when we look at that piece, it is the skill set that is required for those. You can't just get someone out of the streets and get him into the facilities to deal with the most precious things for us, water, right? So it, it requires some technical work. It requires some academic work, some math reviews, some, some learning of, of chemistry, some learning of, of issue that they don't come equipped coming up. So, and, and the process is long. The process is long. It's probably take three to five years for those people to get to the set of skill that is required to be able to operate some of the places in those facilities. And those people are the hardest people so far to get. We're finding out that now. We're paying a lot of money to bring in consultants to come and help us out with some of that work in-house. Why? Because we lost a lot of the institutional knowledge before and we didn't replace that with people that they do. We need to go back to that. We need to get our people, train them, make sure whether the people that we have in-house or the people that we're bringing out of the streets, train them before they come in so they become, come in and hit the ground running. Agreed.
And it sounds like you understand that it's important to put money into that program to, to attract and help to train those kind of
Absolutely.
... programs that are already out there that are kind of giving you that, those beginning efforts. Because we're finding everywhere, even in the school system, where people really need training, even now, learning how to fill out a job.
That's right. Okay. Anyway. Anyway, I'm glad you understand the importance of that and just really tapping into, when you do talk about your budget, to really hone in on the importance of putting money into these programs and helping the people that are actually doing, out there every day, doing that work. They, they need to keep decent salaries to be successful in their, and be happy in their jobs and take care of their families.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Torrance. Don't touch, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director. I do, I do enjoy your expertise, but as well as your forthrightness. As many of my colleagues know, I'm very straightforward. One of the things that concerns me the most with projects is being innovative in the city of Baltimore. Over a year ago, I approached a predecessor and the director of DOT to think about how do we create in-house a crew that can do the restoration after we put new pipes as well as water mains in the ground so that we can save money and also create an opportunity for residents that look like me in Baltimore City who need employment to do things with an expertise that allows us to put more water mains in the ground, but also hire employees and people from the city of Baltimore. I say that because, back to the project that we discussed before, a lot of it was with private contractors and some of it had change orders because we changed the street cuts policy. So how do we innovatively think about cutting the external cost that we need to do the work that we can do at a quarter of the price? So I would love to re, hmm, how to say this, re-engage both agencies about doing this pilot, because I think this is an opportunity for us to create a workforce in city government, but also be innovative in how we approach things in terms of both agencies working together.
So just mentioning to that, just with my days with the DOT, and I'm sure DOT is, and we, we could check on that, DOT still does some of the resurfacing in-house and that's milling an overlay of two, two inches with that. And that's how we think as, 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 as agencies, we think we could be effective. The more complicated work, the full-depth reconstruction, the utility adjustments and a lot of the other issue that is required, a little bit more details, it probably, whether it makes sense to have those in-house or not, something need to be studied and looked at. But at least the milling and overlay piece, the city has been doing that for a long period of time and DOT has been doing it, I think since the early 2000s.
When we last had the discussion, we were looking at how do we create that, the more detailed portion of it, the utility moving as well as the reconstruct, reconstruction of the roadway as well because of the amount of damage that's done in the areas of interruption. I think that at one time when we looked at it with your predecessor, we were looking at, I believe one project was $4 million in over costs in terms of just redoing the resurfacing reconstruction, but had we had an in-house crew, we probably could have done it for a million dollars, right? So I think that it's worth studying to look at how do we add to our workforce, but also save money and add to our workforce to be more efficient at it. DOT doesn't have to do every project, but for the ones that we can do the most roadway for and build the capacity and pay for people to do it in our actual thing. I'll give you an example. One of the three projects that were in my district, I saw no Maryland license plate, right? Which means that they more than likely did not work in the state of Maryland, did not live in the city of Baltimore. I have an unemployment rate of double digits in Cent Town Winchester. There are young men and women that could be employed to do the same work if given the opportunity and the training. I think as a city, we have to start innovatively thinking how we can put more residents to work and then start building from the foundation and ground that we have here. So I just want to put that back out there, let's study it again and look at how we can do it together.
Absolutely.
Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Acting Director, I think we talked about this when we met a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to ask about a time-sensitive issue regarding lead connections to homes?
I'm sorry?
Lead connections to homes. And so you and your team are, right now, going through an effort to identify lead connections to homes. We've received, I want to say $43 million of federal funds to, to execute that effort. I, I want to know what we're doing to make sure that people know about the effort. I, I do remember a few months ago, there was a, you know, we did this big release, but it's been pretty quiet since then. And it's my understanding that if we are, if what we identify by October will largely determine what we're able to spend that money on and our prospect of getting additional money to remove those lead lines to households. So can you give me a little bit of, and maybe, this may be something for a longer conversation, but just the high level on what we're doing to notify people about the lead lines and to make sure that we accurately assess whether or not there are lead lines in people's homes?
So just without looking at it, without getting into too much details, I looked at the letter that we are to send to people. And the letter itself, it's, the language itself, there's certain language that had to be there by law and we'll have to include it. But I thought that is, we probably need to soften it a little bit. I think our communication piece, people are working on different ways to communicate that behind just what hangs on the doors of people's homes. We're looking to send letters to specific homes. We're looking to call these people before they get the letter and let them know that it is, the letter is going to come in and we're going to meet with each one of you personally. And this is the time and the date, whatever works for them. So we have a place and we have a, a plan that we just need to finalize that within the next, I would say, two to three weeks.
I would really, really appreciate some further detail on what it takes to finalize that plan.
Absolutely.
I was at a community meeting maybe a week or two ago, maybe two weeks ago, where there was a representative from DPW there, talking about the lead lines, letting people know that they should check and trying to describe to a, a group of elderly folks, you know, how to find their lead line, if they had one, to find the connecting line to the main. I'll be honest with you, I haven't done it myself. Let alone knowing where to scratch, what color to look for, how to identify whether or not it's lead or copper or anything else for that matter. So I, I imagine there are going to be a lot of people who are very confused about, about this process. What's more, it's my understanding that we have the opportunity to potentially get more money based on how much we identify. So I, I would love to have a further conversation about this. We, we know that we have had, maybe, we, we have, let me be crystal clear here, we have phenomenal water. We do. And I, I want people to understand that and we should be clear about that. But this is a unique opportunity to make sure that all lead within our system or in private connections to our system are removed so that if ever anything happened with our water, there is no threat to drinking water for the city. So I want to have a further conversation with you about that. This is super important and of course, knowing that we have to complete this by October, by October, it's time-sensitive, so I look forward to following up with you more about that issue.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Burnett? Anybody have any, Councilor, Vice President?
Just one, is there still a resident, residential advisory council? I remember that was talk and representatives from, was it representatives from each council district or something? Is that still, what's the status of that?
I've been told that it's been paused.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. I will now entertain a motion on this nomination.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Middleton, seconded by Conway. Take a roll call.
Move favor.
Yes, sir.
Second, Conway. Ready for roll call? Chair Schleifer?
Yes.
Chair Schleifer votes aye. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Burnett votes aye. Mr. Castile appears to be absent. Vice President Middleton?
Aye.
Vice President Middleton votes aye. Member Ramos?
Yes.
Member Ramos votes aye. Mr. Torrance?
Aye.
Mr. Torrance votes aye. Mr. Conway?
Aye.
Mr. Conway votes aye. Mr. Chair, there's six votes and the affirmative, no negative. This nomination can go to the full council on what is now scheduled for the meeting for June 10th.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you all.
All right, we are now adjourned.
Thank you.